Before we move further into the meeting, I do need to tell you that if you wish to speak to the board on your public input, we have public input notice cards to the back of this call. And I believe from wonderful Director of the Boys and Girls, Buck, that you picked one up, and we're glad to have you here today. This supports you, three minutes of time to speak to the topic which you identified on the court. We would like to know whether you are in opposition or in favor of the topic on the floor. At this time, I and all board members want to tell you that we have a lot of work to do here today. Mr. Ray Cole is sitting to my right. Ms. Cole is known to me as Assistant Superintendent, but she has the distinction of being the Chief of Administration for the Lake County School System. Ms. Cole works diligently every day to smooth over the issues that come to her desk. We're trying to do that today. We have many of us who will speak to the board. Last week, they were impassioned, impassioned by the topic. The topic is transportation. The topic is safety. The topic is security, and the topic is also financial stability of the Lake County school system. Each and every one of you have the opportunity to speak to this topic, but I do encourage you to please try to sway us with positive statements. It may not even be necessary today, but we want to hear your positive thoughts. We want to hear any opportunities that you see that we may have overlooked in transporting our children. They are our children, some 41,000 plus, not just the 4,000 that we're speaking of here today, but all children are impacted by the actions of this force in every action we take, and there are always unintended kind of consequences. Before we go any further this evening, I would like to stop Fender to stand up in the audience. Mr. Fender is the Supervisor of Transportation for the Lake County School System. He has been with us a short period of time, comes to us from Sawani County. I would also like to the President of SDIU and the Representative for our Bus Drivers to please stand, Ms. Kim Crummins. Kim has been with us for years, and she has offered great help to the system. Right in front of her is Ms. Chloe Barnes. Chloe Barnes is former resident of the Lake County School System, worked with us for years. She is here today. We have Carla Mitchell in the audience. Carla is a pre-pument of her community. She speaks from the heart, and she is an advocate for positive education. If I miss a person, it's because I don't know you personally. I hope to get to know you personally. And at this time, Madam Superintendent, do you have any comments to make?
Good afternoon, board members, and members of the audience. We're pleased to have everyone here today to talk about this very important topic. We've been in conversation with our Board Attorney, Mr. Johnson, and he has some suggestions to the board today, and I am to look through this, all this, and some of the ideas and opportunities that will be presented today.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent and I would also like to say that we have worked with Sheriff Gary Waters, Sheriff of Lake County, in looking at transportation opportunities. He has been very accommodating. We have more to look at with him, and we will continue to forge forward. Certainly, we have individuals in the audience today who are his deputies, and they do a fine job for all of us. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to present to the board an issue that came to my attention, and that issue is the possibility of busing within this two-mile responsibility zone. And we look to a sister county, and that is Bravard County, and I want to thank Kim Crummins again for bringing this to my attention. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. At Mrs. Fisher's direction, I looked into the possibilities for all kinds of additional busing that was totally on.
Thank you, ma'am.
At Mrs. Fisher's direction, I looked into the possibility of some alternative opportunities for transportation of students inside the two-mile parental responsibility zone. Several comments that came up at the meeting that we had with the public, and we had heard from other people during that time too about some possibilities that we looked into more thoroughly. One of those was the county. The county has a transportation system, and we investigated whether at least at some of the schools, they would be able to be of assistance on a fee-based basis, whether that fee was to be collected directly by the county, by the school board, or a third party. We didn't go into the detail because we found out from the county that based upon their federal grants, I am told they are not able to participate in transportation of students, at least for some of their buses. And for the other buses, they did not have enough ability and flexibility in their scheduling and routing to be able to be of any help other than if they happened to be going by and one of the routes goes by the school, then the children certainly ride the bus at that point in time. But that obviously wasn't going to be something that was going to be a great deal of benefit. I was then aware that we have several charter schools that provide us on their own buses, and three conversion charter schools with their own drivers. That practice is just starting this year as a result of the change in transportation policy. It was hopeful that because some of their routes would overlap into the other schools, that they might be able to assist again on a fee-based basis in their areas, and there are, I think there's probably six or seven charter schools that have buses. We contacted them, and for a number of reasons, they're not going to be in a position to help us out either. In all fairness, there are a couple of administrative issues that for a single school would probably be overwhelming in trying to deal with the scheduling collection, the issues that would come up if the student was waiting in a bus stop and they had to pay, and those kinds of things, that they were reluctant to be willing to undertake. So that left us with either a private company and a couple of ideas that Mrs. Fisher and I talked about were much the same way that the school board contracts, for example, graduation rings. We don't sell the rings. We don't buy the rings. What we do is, we used to select an individual company to be able to come into the schools, and they would have the franchise on selling those rings. They would do all the business end of it, the finance, the investment, the collection on their own. And when I tell you that, that's probably not realistic because we learned that in Volusia and in Bravard, or assumed to be Bravard, there's been private companies that have come in in those counties to do exactly what we're talking about doing here. And it would seem that it needs a first blush, the cost for doing that may be prohibitive. That's still an issue that we can look into, but really, it's kind of the carpet for the horse because you really have to know how many people are going to be interested in participating in that kind of program before you can sell it to a third party. Then Ms. Crummins let us know that she had been tracking down fee-paid programs around the country, and had found out that Bravard County had had a program in for several years. You have in front of you, I think, two documents that are from Bravard, actually, three documents that are from Bravard County. One are their bylaws and policies. That's the document numbered 8600, Transportation. That has just one item, an item D, that was changed to deal with this particular issue, and that elementary students residing within two miles of their school may be provided bus transportation at the discretion of the principal and upon payment of a fee established by the board. This transportation will only be provided if seats are available on existing buses serving the school, and the student gets an established bus stop. Now, somewhere between there and their establishment of their administrative procedures, which I would suggest was probably approved by the board, and we would put it together as a continuation of our transportation policy or additional policy as opposed to an administrative procedure. The policy talks about elementary schools, but the fee-based service procedures talk about essentially all students, middle school and high school too. There are a couple of unique characteristics about it. There are no additional bus stops that are created. If an individual in a two-mile zone wishes to participate, then they would have to get to whatever bus stop has already been established. There are no additional buses put on. The buses are run on a hands-needed basis. They actually have a lottery system built into their policy if all the available buses are full and there are additional individuals who want to participate. They have an elimination of this program for students who are not attending their assigned school. If where someone wants to transfer, they don't participate in the program, and we already have a new ban on transportation for attending an out-of-zone school anyway in our regular policy. They charge a fee of $2 per school day, which equates to a maximum of $150 for the first semester and $180 for the second semester, and they have a provision that no cost to a family will exceed $300 for the first semester or $360 for the second semester. The money stays at the beginning of the semester, and Ms. McLeod and I spoke about there are several different ways to administratively handle that and be able to take care of that with as little confusion and concern for the parents that this is another issue of whether they pay for something or isn't. The rest of the policy talks about how you identify which students are eligible and the responsibilities a student has, much as it would in our normal transportation policy. I think there will be some detail about school bus capacity. I honestly don't know whether that's relevant to our school buses or not, that they have a specific limitation for middle school, high school, and elementary school, how many children they allow on a bus. The other major issue that we also reviewed was that Mr. Davis had learned that there's the possibility in the hazardous walking zone definition, we all know it's very strict and it's very specific, but there is one area that has to do with the width of the area available to walk when there's a swale along the road, that Mr. Davis has kind of worked further with the county to see if there could be some conclusion reached between both parties to the interpretation of that. And if that is so, then we can submit that to part of education for confirmation that that's a reasonable interpretation of that particular rule under these factual circumstances, and may be able to provide services for more of the hazardous walking areas than currently exist. So that's something that we're going to have to work with the county on to see what they're willing to do. Of course, in order to be on that list, they have to also be on their work plan as well at some point in time. So where we are today is that the, looking at the county, looking at charter schools, those possibilities really don't exist. If you're looking at a fee-based program similar to Bravard, that's something that really takes only the development of a policy, which can be done fairly quickly, especially since Bravard, Ms. Crummins shared theirs with us. If we want to go that route, then I need to know today your preferences in some of these issues that are included in this policy about cost, ridership, eligibility, their issue on the bus stop, their issue on the only available buses, and those kinds of things. And I think we can get some inspiration on that, although that will be important and get it done fairly quickly.
I think we're in a positive position at this moment. I do want any board member that wants to speak at this moment to go right ahead, or we will go right ahead with public input. Mr. Fender, do we want to speak?
Mr. Johnson, when you said we could move quickly, what is going on?
Quickly, it is. Heads change are policy.
Ninety days?
Thirty days. We can have a policy. I get some specific direction from the board today. We can have a policy for the meeting Monday. I think we already have three special meetings, so we can have another fourth special meeting for the purpose of getting a policy change. And then it could be advertised right after that, and thirty, thirty-five days later, we would have a change in the policy. Now, there is one, I've looked at it, I'm not confident about it, but I will, I need to point this out to you. In your existing policy, you say that, and I'm looking at 8.31, I think you've all been given a copy of it, in the paragraph number one, it says that these students, and these are students who reside, excuse me, under the following conditions, students who reside within two miles of the designated school may be eligible to ride the bus, special authorization granted by the school board. Now, the issue that comes to my mind is until, if you're inclined, just looking at a policy and move forward in the next thirty, thirty-five days, does special authorization give you the language to be able to go ahead and start doing some of these things before the policy's passed on second reading? The concern I have is if you look in the very first sentence, each student who is transported shall be entitled to free transportation provided EBA by the rules. Those are a little contradictory to each other. One says if you have a student that's eligible, then they're entitled to free transportation, but at the moment, quite frankly, the students, right, inside two miles are not eligible under our program. So that's, I bring that out because I was looking for a possibility, if we wanted to move forward more quickly, what could we do? We could possibly grant special authorization conditions upon payment of a nominal fee during that period.
Thank you. Board members, I did call Ms. McLeod today, and I'd like Ms. McLeod to come over, because she likes, Ms. McLeod is our finance officer. And I asked her about our reserve fund, and she gave me a statement, and has called me back with an updated statement. We do not have any due amount in the reserve fund to be extended on anything, but I was surprised that there might be $85,000. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The question she asked was what is our required reserve, and what did we have in addition to that? My first answer was, I'm closing out last year, which will be brought to you on Monday. I give her that answer. There is about a million dollars there, but it has now been brought forward as part of next year's budget. The question to her was which year were you asking me about? She meant the current year we're in, which we will approve the final budget also next Monday, and in that version, we have approximately an $85,000 surplus in addition to the required 4% reserve.
Ms. McLeod, could we use that for startup programs essentially for transportation?
That is general fund money at this point that is up to the discretion of the board.
Okay. And what I'm considering is that if we move ahead with this, that you would have to have some money assigned to this program to start it up, and there is $85,000. There is another issue that the board can always look at, and that is whether our funds and the capability to look at the entire budget, and I know we've looked at the entire budget for cuts, but there's always an opportunity during the year to find funds. The Superintendent was very great in telling all staff and all administrators, stop your purchasing orders when we came to the floor of the budget year. This is a time when the board can give direction that we want that type of policy to continue, that we don't want to lose teachers, we don't want to lose programs, but any unnecessary dollars that might pop up would be reused by the Superintendent, because if you remember, she said she looked at each one of those purchase orders. That's something I personally would like to see her continue to do, so that we continue to find funding. Funding is an issue. At this time, any other board member wish to speak?
I'll go ahead and put these out there, so that they're already out there, because I think as we start talking about policy, we need to have a looking included. You've already got the takes arrived. Still, we like to look at students who are having cross six, four, and one on these highways. Some of this can be done with, that's one. The next one, for students having to cross six five mile an hour roads, I don't care what road it is, where there are no crosswalks, or no, especially lit crosswalks or lit intersections, but any crosswalks, and I have some of those up. In my area, there's some, Debbie's area, where the kids are just crossing, and that's, those are, that is another area that, if it's fifty-five foot blocks, we can look at that. I did ask for a question, I guess we can get an answer from staff, from everybody. There are some areas that the length of grass was concerned, all of the DOT property. Are we able to have staff, know some of that grass that on highways, to facilitate some of these young walkers who is willing to, or stuff that? And then crossing the market line, we've got a list here across the market, I think it's a good start. Let's see what was said, but that was fine. Now, we did type, as you were talking about implementing this, the one thing I will say is I would like to hear from transportation on their child changes and modifications, because the interest behind us was to increase efficiency, and I want to be sure that they've had the opportunity to do what this measure was to allow, which is to let us off being inefficient. If we're just going to go ahead and jump into something new, then never going to get a chance to give these routes the way they are efficient at the age of 90 percent of the world.
And I need to speak to, as I shared with the Superintendent earlier today, that their children have been held up, that buses are half-full, and they're not necessarily the first seating of a bus, they might be the second or third seating of a bus, they're still half-full. Those are issues that are rampant throughout the system. I see Mr. Fender shaking his head. I think it's time to hear from our administration director. Mr. Fender?
Certainly, we still do have buses out there that are not running at capacity, and as part of this process, this is kind of a step-by-step process. So, you know, step one was to, in a very short time, to reroute with the parameters as far as dropping the two-mile riders. And then we do have a lot of buses out there that are not at capacity, but as those registrations come in, then we revisit it, you know, we will be contemplating adjustments, whether it be combining routes, cutting routes. So it's not just something that, we don't have a software capability at this time, unfortunately, that I can just put everybody on there and send it to the computer and do that. So we're kind of waiting, we're still receiving registrations today. So can we be more efficient? Absolutely. But we're waiting for those numbers to come in. I've got some preliminary numbers, I didn't bring them with me today, but a ride, some routes that are running tiers with fifteen, seventeen, but I also have some that are running more than fifty kids. So some are going to be overfull, we're going to adjust those down, some are going to be underfull, we're going to adjust those up. Places we can combine, we will combine. Places we can eliminate tiers or routes, we'll eliminate.
Mr. Fender? I also had individuals call me and say that they had gone to a designated pickup, and that pickup was not honored by the system, that it's the an older pickup area was. Is that happening? Where in many cases, I believe, everybody that called agreed, and this was a reputable person that was on call.
Without knowing the specific area you're talking about, I'd have to look into it. There were some areas that were in or here that two-mile designation, that stops were no longer there because we weren't picking those children up, because they were within two miles. So the peril may have been something that they were accustomed to going to at the bus stop that was eliminated due to the two-mile, but I have to look into that specific area.
My statement, my statement was from them, that indeed they had gone to a designated bus stop, but the bus never came to that, and that designated bus stop was a new one. So if we can check that out, are all new designated spots truly bus pickups? Or did we revert to an older bus pickup spot?
Again, I have my own.
And I'd be glad to get a seat.
Excuse me, I'm going to take you back from the name of the pod, it said, I did attend the NPO and represented last week. I do have Mike Wood here from the Lake Sutter NPO, and on their tab number four, it was the Transit Development Plan Major Update. As one of the consultants that came in, one of our objectives on this plan was to address the schools using and whether it's residents or employees. That is something that they're going to be looking at over the course of this study, and Mr. Johnson brought that up about Lake Express. The law right now do not allow, and the county will have to change, so I concur with him on that. The other part that, we got to tab A, which one's discussing, courtesy bussing, because at the NPO, you have all the fourteen cities that are represented on there, you have the counties, you have, it's the board of directors that looks at transportation issues countywide. And what they did, we had very good discussion, all the cities were very involved, they are working with the NPO, the NPO is working with them individually, to address any area that they consider to be hazardous within their municipality. It has to go through the county, what our staff does is that we have to go through county, which I had told you before, that's how we did the triangle area one. What T J and his staff have taken on is helping us to determine what those are with the city. The city funds the NPO, the city, the county funds the NPO and their staff. So they have been, have said they were going out in their meeting, and Mike has here even verified, they're going out and they're going to be making a meeting with every one of the cities, going over there, they think they're our concern, see if it's valid. If it is valid, then we can request funding for it. That's where it all comes back to. We, we're not trying to make the kids be out of the road, I mean, that is, it's our risk, seeing the thing that. What the county has done, that was displayed in that meeting also, is they are going along and rolling back, they don't ride away. Problem is, we're going to these six lanes, and we addressed the six lanes, we talked about it, and if you notice, you have to have a map here that shows where you need to have crossing bars. That's another issue, since Mike works with pedestrian, bikes and pedestrian committees, that's another area they're going to look at where we need to have crossing bars. Whether it's a state, it's a county issue, then the sheriff will work with us on that. If it's a city, then the city police and the city council will work with us on that. This is a long-term show. It's not fixed for today, but it is finally, as Dr. Mosley said, we put the envelope. Now everybody is trying to work together, and we have a resource in the NPO who is our conduit to get down to all the different organizations. And it was very positive, I have no negative feedback, we had quite a long discussion about it, and I see them all working with us to help resolve the long-term issue.
I have something, Mrs. Fisher?
And I'll let you speak in one second, but I did want to go back to Mr. Howard's statement about the six little young men crossing at Babes and Lake Forest at 4:41. I happened to be going by at three o'clock in high school, too, was trying to cross that entire area. The light was further down the roadway. I think we need to also let our students know where the nearest cross in a section is. I'd wait to see the young men cross, and definitely, I don't want to have to watch that every day because it's a peril. It would be a peril for a five-year-old, and it was for a sixteen-year-old, too, that there was an intersection that had a crosswalk line that could be used.
And Dr. Howard, you can just verify, most of my comments were directed at elementary school students, not at all the other schools. Even that's why, that's why we brought the high school. Mine was directed at elementary school, because trying to watch, especially eight through three, get across these highways, if they get, you know, the short legs, they get stuck in the middle, that's kind of where I get concerned with the different highways. Why, I think, do we, are any of those things important at that? What are our, and we can...
As I said, there were so many unintended results of our actions that we need to look at, and I applaud everybody that has been patient with us. Our teachers, union president is here, the teachers have been patient with us, they've given us heads up. Stuart Flatley has moved in his position, but, you know, we get calls in Supreme Court, I'll turn it to you.
Well, another area, we have so much road construction going on...
Well, another area, we have so much road construction going on, and I can tell you that up in my area, from Pixieola all the way up to Eagles Nest Road, they are six-laning those roads. And every day, it's almost a different configuration going through there. So, and I know that there are students on opposite sides of the roads having to cross, and there's not even a crossing park where they, they can get across. So that, that's another area that I would want us to look at, that can go out for three years before all that's completed.
Any other comments? Yes, the final.
You're right about unintended consequences, in which I believe we know that. But it's all just a confirmative statement, is we have the county, the municipalities, and school board, and it's a little bit of see no evil, speak no evil, hear no evil. That, that, this has been going on since two thousand and nine, this planning, this was really poorly executed. And I think that before we walk out of here today, that we have really two issues at hand. One has to do with what is legitimately courtesy busing, which is those folks that elect to have their children. And then there are those where it is hazardous, and where it is hazardous, we need to come up with a plan, be it a depot or a stop, where we're picking up these children, and not waiting thirty days for a policy change.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know this is an afterthought, and you want to play, but I need to hear the board members, because we're going to get something done here today, and it's going to be positive. There's not one of us that wants to wait thirty days, I don't want to wait for darkness to come at the end of daylight savings time, I'm here to do business today. So, Mr. Fender.
But I had asked, Will Davis, and he said he didn't have time. I reached out to Kim, who knows the area, and I think that within our team, we can identify those areas that are especially hazardous right now, and address those, and maybe it's a depot stop, so the bus can make an A stop. But we, that's not our recommendation. And then it's clearly a policy, and people pay it, let that be for those that legitimately have an issue getting their kids to school, but it's not hazardous. I think it's personal.
Thank you. Every time cars are right in front of me, Marilynsey Ives. When you come to the podium, please give your name, your address.
My name is Marilynsey Ives, I live on Link's Lane, in Royal Highlands, on two twenty seventh, and I'm a resident of Lake County. I'm expanding a little bit on an earlier email that I sent to board members. I don't have any children or grandchildren attending Lake County schools, but I am definitely concerned about the safety of children. And I'd like to express my opinion to you regarding the elimination of busing for children who live under two miles from their elementary school. Some have termed this courtesy busing. I call it smart busing. I have knowledge of this procedure, because more than thirty-five years ago, the school district where I lived in New York State adopted the policy of having children who live less than two miles from their elementary school not be bused to school. At that time, we lived one point nine miles from the school where my oldest daughter attended. So theoretically, she was supposed to walk, a seven-year-old, two miles along a very busy winding road with no shoulders or sidewalk. Can you imagine what it might have happened to her, where traffic routinely went fifty-plus miles an hour? It took a long two months in this work, after many, many meetings, much chaos, and loss of school time for students, before this problem was solved. The school board then approved an emergency appropriation to fund busing. In the years following, the issue of eliminating busing for students was never suggested again, and always included in the budget. Everyone had learned that this policy was not in the best interest or safety of students. It is almost inconceivable that I'm hearing the same story here in Lake County thirty-five years later. Where have we come when children's lives and well-being are not number one priorities? What has happened in our society that budgetary problems always seem to affect those who can't speak for themselves? I read on your website about a safety committee for students. This committee is irrelevant unless the students arrive to school safely. I hope you will understand the severity of the decision to stop busing. It was not a smart decision thirty-five years ago, and it is not a smart decision now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next participant is Vivian Carl Mitchell.
Good afternoon, my name is Vivian Carl Mitchell, I reside at eight ten Liberty Street, and I really don't have too much to say other than the lady with the black and white blouse on, Mrs. Ives, I think is her name, I concur. I also agree with you, Mr. Madias, that's all I have to say, those two are beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jane Hefting?
Good afternoon, my name is Jane Hefting, I live at nine two nine Royal Oak Boulevard in Leesburg. I want to thank the school board for convening this meeting. I submitted a letter to the board a few minutes ago, signed by twenty-three people. These were twenty-three people that I approached at the Leesburg Olympics on Saturday, and I was amazed at how quickly people said, oh yes, I'll sign it, I'll sign it. I only had a couple people say, well, I want to think about it. So twenty-three out of twenty-five says to me that this is such an important issue. And the letter urges that the busing be reinstated. For the sake of our children, I hope you do immediately reinstate busing, but I know that the problem is funding on the long-term. And it's very clear, we need more public funding coming into our schools. And that usually means more taxes. And I think as a society, we have to stop saying that tax increases are dirty words. Taxes are the price of civilization. We know that in two thousand and eleven, our governor and the Florida legislature dramatically cut funding to schools. And this is now what it has come down to, where we're, the schools don't have enough money, so they're starting to cut vital services. I would like to urge this board to do what you can politically, to say to the Lake County Board of Commissioners, look, you need to raise taxes locally. And then to say to our Florida legislators, you've got to raise taxes too, whether that means more corporate taxes, or establishing a state income tax, but we need to place taxes on the people who are most able to afford to pay them. Maybe some of you saw the newspaper article on the front page of one of our local papers, I meant to bring it and forgot, but it talked about how the top ten percent of people in Florida have their income has increased in the last ten years, whereas the median income of our families has decreased. So taxes are a good word when it comes, raising taxes is a very good idea when it comes to our school districts. Thank you.
Jamie Mullins.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Madigan, Chaney Mullins, three zero eight zero, Rapid Drive, Mount Door, Florida. Good afternoon, I have one question. How can you make a irresponsible decision to take our buses away without any public knowledge over the summer, never making sure the issue, never making sure the county and city had time to fix the issue, to make our children safe? And why didn't you follow up with the county and cities before making an irresponsible decision to make sure every single person involved can respond with each other? But instead of doing the right proper thing of keeping our buses till all safety is the measure in place, you made the reckless decision to put our children's lives in danger. You stayed at one of the meetings, you looked at all the areas, and they were found safe for our children. Our area was found by the city and the county that it was deemed unsafe. They did a study back in two thousand and eight, that never changed from now supposedly for the study that y'all supposedly looked at. My main concern is, if that happened to my community, did y'all really go out and look at the other areas? I mean, I understand there's a budget cut, I know. And then I was reading in an article of a newspaper, they said, I believe it's Orlando Sentinel, that I agree with the program y'all are trying to start, two dollars for children, I guess the parents that work to make money, a dollar for children with a reduced lunch, but it never mentioned about the poverty level where children is going to get hungry. So how would they get to school if their parents can't even afford a dollar or two dollars? I'm just here to say, thank you for giving me my children's buses back, but I tell you one thing, what we have to endure for the buses, we did not have to endure to vote you in. I mean, I am still, I admire him for what he said, it is unfair for a five-year-old to walk, crossing the highway, which Howard said, six-lane highway, off of Wolf Branch, two little kids can't be picked up in the fourth grade, because Cherry Street is two streets down, because quote-quote, it's against the two mile radius. Come on now, two miles, and the bus is coming, bye, empty. Granted, Lake County is growing, but don't put the kids' lives in danger. I pray today, and I'm missing work for this, I pray today that y'all don't wait thirty days. I pray as we walk out as parents, and I'm just here for the other community, that we know in our heart that the Lake County School Board, that who we voted in for the safety of our children realizes, and I apologize for my behavior last time, I was just totally masked, and I apologize to y'all. But we should not have to protest, we should not have to do all that, we should not have to go too extreme, just bring our buses back.
Thank you, Ms. Solon, Anthony Becker.
Anthony Becker, Rapid Drive, Fort Worth, Florida. It seems like the spirit has shifted from the board since last reunion. Mrs. Fisher, I thank you for taking the initiative to reopen this issue.
Thank you.
One thing that this decision has done is galvanize all of Lake County. You hear person after person explaining whether they have kids in the system or not, that this is wrong and needs to be fixed. The primary concern here is our children's safety. The secondary concern is financials. It's a tough choice, of when you're choosing values over children's safety. That's not a good decision. When my children would be doing something, and dad would say, stop, stop right now, it's a safety issue, there would be no more discussion, children would probably argue that my children would never argue with mom or dad going, this is a safety issue. I please thank you to look at this as a safety issue. Take the responsibility on yourself, not on the parents coming pleading with you, to address the safety issues that you all know are there. That the two mile reset, it was done blindly, without any consideration. Please restore processes so that our kids get to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Krista Peglin.
It's been a long road, and it's not over. I do think all of the members of the board have had a change of heart, and a light into What I guess I want to say today, is really it was based on what you had to say first, was I one hundred percent support coming out today with a resolution that a bus can be where it needs to be as early as tomorrow or the day after, while we work on, perhaps following Revard County's example. Secondly, how do I, as a parent, continue to follow up? Because unfortunately, some damage has been done. I know that sounds familiar. Some of my faith has been lost, or it's been restored. Some of my trust has been lost, and it needs to be earned back. But if you want to work with us, the parents, the community, the neighbors, the family, then just point us in the right direction. If you need me to come to the county committee meetings and follow this woman's example, and ask them to raise taxes so that my child can go, my children can go and come home from school safely and learn well while they're there, I will do that. If you want me to go to the county and to the city and say, I want sidewalks put in, I need crosswalks put in, I will do that. It's got to remain open, I cannot figure it all out. I've been working on your budget, just like you have, and I've seen some places that I feel can be reallocated. I am positive that you all will also find some more funds, and I hope you do so, because in general, I really don't feel, feel fee-based program is our best decision, but we'll take it for now, I'll take it for now. And so thank you for the work you've done, hope you don't take this the wrong way, but I will be watching you, and I will be trying to attend as much as I can, to be more of a part, because I believe in being part of the solution, not just the problem.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bankchuk, please.
Bankchuk, as you know, I write a blog on fiscalrangers.com, and I've been coming to these meetings for about six years. First of all, the taxpayer advocate, I would like to support the fact that you did do the analysis on this, that this is a shortage of funds. It is a program, and the people that don't know, don't know that you've been cutting the last four years, because the state has been cutting your funds, and they haven't been showing up to support you in trying to reverse state mandates or other things. And so when I hear observers show up at something like this at the last minute, I think I would like to encourage you to encourage your constituents to start being more active in knowing that the state has cut a lot of the money coming to the schools, and that you dipped down several times in cutting different things. And when you're at the point, to me, as a former corporate and government auditor, that you have to start telling people that you're not going to let them purchase goods and supplies to department, I think that's too far. And you've retained, I think, a lot of coverage for classroom exercises. So what I would like to suggest is that you asked the constituents to help you reverse these Florida state mandates and cuts, that you helped you reverse the problem where this county gets only something like sixty-five out of sixty-seven on the list of fees from transportation, and this issue is part of the reason why that came about. And that you also get encouragement to reverse the impact fee waivers, because to me, as observer, that's the biggest problem, due to lobbying from the Home Builders Association, and parents, and parents and taxpayers have not shown up, so you've lost, what, I think you said something like twenty-four million dollars in the last three years, because you haven't had any waivers. I mean, you've had waivers on these, due to the pressure from the Home Builders Association. And I think parents have to start realizing, they've got to support elected officials in trying to maintain the revenue sources that you do have available to you, rather than constantly cutting into meat of the programs. So, and realize, and also explain to them maybe more fully that counties and cities are the ones responsible. are the ones responsible for safety in sidewalks, they're the ones that should be lobbying because you don't have any direct control over it. However, you have started initiating talks with them, and that's great. I congratulate you on trying to get through this and trying to resolve a lot of these individual issues one by one, because that's the way you need to.
Thank you very much. The last card that I have is Eliana Ossoli. Excuse me, not the last card. Eliana Ossoli.
Good afternoon. My name is Ask Ossoli. So, like, thank you for trying to work. I am a mother of five. I did speak at the last meeting. Three of them attend Pine Ridge Elementary School, office 561, and law house. And today I'm here because I'm very encouraged, I know that on the parental side, we were very effective last meeting, and to call an emergency hearing on this, it did build up hope, because we are losing hope, because we're out there frontline, doing what we need to do. I supplied names and the area surrounding of our school, and it's not just our school, of course, I'm fighting for all the families and children out there. I've heard every one of these stories personal, and while, you know, we could break it down with six lane or however many lane, it shouldn't be any lane that a child is crossing. So, we can't go any further on it, but we will, on discussing what we know is all right. I know you all have hearts, and I appreciate the time that, you know, listening and again, holding this meeting, but it cannot be any longer. It cannot. I'm here today, I check out my children early because I do not have busing, and I cannot afford to put them out to daycare, and no one else is going to watch my children while I attend any meeting. I'm a stay-at-home mother, and I fought for that. My husband works and fought so that I can provide what our family needs are, and I'm also providing care for other families now because of this decision. It can't be much longer. It's done, but it can be undone, and I know it's more than just numerical, and it doesn't take that much brainiac, you know, formations and ways of what I've called county and city and looked at, as Bill Mathias said, about from 2009, it's simply state due to elementary school. Our concern is residential area. Can't be any longer. Please don't build this up with any more false hopes.
Freddie Williams.
Good afternoon. Freddie Williams, Boys and Girls Club of Lake and Sumter Counties. Thank you for having me. On July 22nd, our raised concerns of the kids that will be affected with the Boys and Girls Club. Our numbers have shown that it's affected close to 400 kids, and I share that through the Boys and Girls Club that we've had zero teen pregnancies and zero quarter-juations of the hundreds and thousands, excuse me, the 100 teen pregnancies that we have here in Lake County and 1,000 teen quarter-juations here in Lake County. And that's very, very critical, especially whenever you look at the kids that need our services the most and that need that extra hand up the most, and more importantly, the parents. The parents that are having to work the extra hours or try to go to school a little longer to be able to provide the work. In spite of that, I'd like to thank County Fisher, Debbie Stein, and Bill Mathias. I'm sorry, Freddie, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with you, but I've spoken with them, and I commend you guys all for your hard work and dedication. I know that you guys have spent hours. John Davidson, Dr. Ossoli, and all of the school board staff have spent tireless hours being able to try to find a solution to this. I know this isn't easy. I know that you guys are getting beat up over this, but don't think for any moment that all of our hard work and dedication and commitment to our children's safety and well-being is not going to notice. So, I know there are a lot of parents that are upset, and I'd like to thank the school board staff, thank the school board for, one, holding this meeting and trying to think of solutions to be able to solve these problems. So, thank you again for your service.
Krista Repackey.
I'm here this afternoon. I'm Miss Sacken, I'm 13-year-old, couldn't be. She actually. Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Krista Repackey, I live at 600 River verge court, apartment 1224 in Lake County. I am here this afternoon, I'm here for my 13-year-old daughter, Ariana, who wanted to be here. I welcome the kids from Climon Elementary, who went out, too fast, over. I can do this. Who has no sidewalks because sidewalks are closed because they are being constructed along State Road 50, who have to cross over the honor of Al France to State Road 27, as well as, I'm also here to be my daughter's champion, because she crossed over 22 lanes of road to get to school. She's 13-years-old, she's in eighth grade. Yes, I understand 2.9 miles, and by the letter of the law, we live 1.9 miles from the school. However, door-to-door, we live 2.5 miles. Yes, I did send an email, and I felt the email I received and returned was very dismissive, that the parental responsibility was not necessary, but she had to walk. However, I work, I work full-time. My workday is generally 12 hours. When I open in the morning, I leave my home at 6:00 a.m., I get home at 6:00 p.m. When I close, I generally leave my home at 1:00 a.m. And, I'm sorry, I leave home at 1:00 p.m. and leave home at 1:00 a.m. It's just my life, it is what it is. Because I do this to fully support my daughter and her mother. It is just her and I. Does she have friends with an Asphor, Asphasphor? She does, and we've been very fortunate that she's had friends that have brought her to and from school. However, there are days where she has to have to walk. And quite frankly, when she does it, my heart stops beating until I hear from her, because of those 22 lanes, seven of them are State Road 50. And that's just, to me, it was unacceptable that I received a letter 38 days after the school board decision, with only 18 days before school started. I received my letter on August 1st, and I literally got from the mailbox, got back in my car, and I drove the distance, because I did not believe that we were within the two-point mile, the, excuse me, the two miles. Drove it, realized, okay, I did, I went home, sent the letter, as it said, to the Lake County Transportation with questions. Got the questions back, and again, as they said, I felt like it was very dismissive. I apologize, I was not here at the beginning of the meeting, because I didn't find out about the meeting until news this morning. I had to go to work, and through the great partnership with my team, they allowed me to leave early to get here. Unfortunately, it still led up to the beginning of the meeting, and it does sound like there had been advances made. So, at this point, I would like to say thank you for starting the ball rolling, and please don't let it stop. Our children fight to keep that ball. Thank you.
And then, Ask Ossoli.
My name is Vincent Ossoli. I live at 10424 Nassau Lane in Climon, Florida. My children attend Pine Ridge Elementary School. I have three of them. And I was here at the last meeting, and I was a bit outraged, and I mean, quite honestly, I still am, because my kids, my children still don't have the bus. Bottom line is, is that we didn't know about this until two weeks before school. I'm sure you heard that kind of time again, but it still doesn't change anything. These children are walking across 561 with zero, zero protection. The sheriff's department aren't out there, the school teachers can't be out there, the teachers can't be out there. My child is right back there, he's, we'll call him this podium, there's no possible way you can expect a child like that to walk up and down 561 and law house or the Pine Island, I'm sure you know where that's at. Something has got to be done, and it can't wait 30 days, because nobody predicts what could happen between now and 30 days, whether a child's going to get struck by a car between now and then, because I see all the alarm, these kids are running up and down this road. I drive it, I stop, and just to watch and make sure these children are, if I appear in my car, which I've done to cross these children, then that's what I've got to do. Or that these kids are getting late for school every single morning. School starts at 8:30, the back of the bus line, the car by line, doesn't get done until 4:00 tonight. So now I'm wondering, my kids late for school, or the kids behind me, but all the kids that are already in there are late for school. They still have to stay in the public relations, they still have to do their school news. So by the time that's all sort of done, we're already 30 minutes behind the 8:00. They're not getting started until 9:00, 9:15. They're supposed to start at 8:30. There's parents with no cars, with one car. They're getting in trouble with their jobs, because enough is enough. Their bosses aren't willing to accept what's going on with them anymore about their target miss, what even is work. You know, it's not fair. You guys know it's not fair. And I don't trust or believe in any single one of you until something happens. I'm sorry, I don't, because I've been lied to before, and I've given the benefit of the doubt. I'm not willing to trust until it's done. So, please, if something happens, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Superintendent, did you want my comment? Can we say if we still have contact?
Let's play on the horse.
Mrs. Fisher, can you please restate what you just said? I did not hear you clearly. We heard some bright individuals speak about their passion, and I wondered if you wanted to make a final comment.
I heard many of the board members' comments, and studying bits and pieces, so I'm not sure that I have a full grasp on the entire conversation of the afternoon. I am very concerned as a lawyer, I hear the passion of our parents, I also know that we have been working very diligently with the municipalities, and I'm very appreciative to the municipalities and to the local administration for assistance with a lot of the concern with interruptions, all the rock, arguments, and demonstrations, the law enforcement control, we have to adjust this in the car by lines to address the time constraints. And as Sir Lutz said, mentioned, there are some schools that have incredibly long lines and continuing to address those. I think it's meant to be a partnership that we continue to work with anyways, because Mrs. Adam, you mentioned to me earlier. With the model that Mr. Johnson presented in the head house of that, and we have reviewed that, obviously, I think does give some advantage in helping to provide opportunities for parents that work within that responsibilities model, and it does take advantage of the seats that are on the bus. I know that we need to look to the assistance of that and procedures. I wasn't quite sure, based on some of the parts of the conversation, and we know that clearly does give the rest of the road to implementing that to then, though, third-day advertising. There may have been a comment made about that, but I'm not sure I heard that.
Ordinarily, you've heard from the superintendent, there was comment, apparently, that she was unable to hear, and that's understandable for this first venture. I think that we've heard from individuals this evening that are asking for our attention, just as they did last week. I think we have a possibility of pursuing the Revard policy. And we also have the possibility of the board to move forward and say, "We would like students to go back on the buses that were being transported this time last year." That would be a possibility while we are working out the structure of our own Revard County transport policy. You've heard our attorney say that it would take 30 days. You've heard parents and board members say, 30 days is a long period of time. Every day that we don't have these children on a bus is definitely a long period of time. I would ask this call, do you have any kind of statements from the superintendent to be read at this time and recommendations?
No, we don't have any recommendations at this time, only because the superintendent wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss this problem, and of course, to hear more comments from our audience.
Well, my statement is, I'm being very bold to say, you know, I think we can develop a policy. I think if you want, within 30 days of the issue gets to our orders, the issue is the fact that we have bus routes that were established that we can revert to immediately. The parents that are here today at TV programs have all been very involved and very vocal. That would be my recommendation to you, and I'll let you speak to it now that you've heard everyone. Mr. Mathias.
I'm going to tell you a story first about an area that I was called to by a parent, and I would have a look at it. And it's that Lake Park Road 19, where the road crosses, and there's no crossing signal. I came back and I called the city of the areas, they sent me to the county. The county sent me to the state. Five days later, I get a return call with some excitement that it's going to be fixed, because it's in the five-year plan. That's how government seems to work, and we can do better. And I'm not at, obviously, since, again, I own the Cenarot audit, that we have to be prudent with the dollars, but where we have these hazardous conditions, I think that the parents would cooperate, and even if they had to go to a stop rather than multiple stops. That we can work together. At Pine Ridge, we need to fix that now. Now. Miniola, we need to fix that now. And again, I think this is in the spirit of our staff working, and perhaps, I don't care, if we could, if we have $85,000, why don't we see what that could spend and get this fixed tomorrow?
Yes, that's exactly what I think it would be with $85,000. And I was very glad that, you know, Mr. Mathias could tell me that, would sure be. I think that transportation, we have a dilemma in this new county. I think that we have issues of an expansion county, and even though growth has slowed, people have moved into our county, and it has caused different areas of major hazard concern. And I want to thank board members for going out in their communities. I want to give special needs to Yumitilla area, I want to give special needs to the Eustis area. We have individuals here from communities that are in those areas, and we have a Hispanic community in Yumitilla that really has no voice, and I want to speak for them. They have great concern in crossing Highway 19, and in doing so, they have small children. Those small children are all in RDSL OAL classes. We want to establish their citizenships here in America and in Lake County, but whatever we can do to help these children. I'm trying to go.
I want to do all that we can possibly do, but I also don't want to get the community's hopes up on things that we may not be able to fulfill. To talk about putting buses back on the road tomorrow, I don't know if we can or we can't do that. We had a $650,000 shortfall, and that was the major reason why this board said that we could no longer provide transportation within the two-mile parent responsibility centers. Now, we have learned that there are some hazardous walking conditions that have got the attention of the counties and the cities. We'd like to continue working with the MPO and the county and the cities on these areas. $85,000 is not going to go very far. So if we say that we can provide busing for the next couple of months, what are we going to do to the second half of the year? Or what are we going to cut in order to be able to provide, continue to provide the busing transportation? I appreciated Kim Cronin sending Revard's policy to us. I believe it's 64 out of 67 counties in Florida that do not provide transportation within the two-mile radius. And so, we were one of the last three, and we've had to look at this. We need to continue to look at this, but at the same token, we can't make promises that we may not be able to sustain. So, whatever we can do in the meantime, I would like to see what it's going to take and how can we do it, and then looking at a policy for long-term. That's where I am.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. Thank you. Dr. House.
We're essentially talking about two different things. We're talking about, on one side, true privacy. On the other side, we're talking about, so this board feels that there are hazardous walking conditions. walking conditions in our opinion. And I think that each one of us has a definition of that. Two of the things that I brought forward, crossing six-lane highways and crossing 55 mile an hour. 55 mile an hour is by 61 at 60% of that Pine Ridge. There is no crosswalk there and part of Long House Road is 55 as well. And then if you go across the corner of Pine Ridge, there's a sidewalk in front of it and there's nice cement wall or, or no bus. So I get the point and I understand that it's difficult to walk through there. I think as a board, we need to set a policy, even if we implement it now, we can at least set the parameters and say, this is where we're going so that our staff has a clear, concise definition of what we want to be at and where it is. But those two things will take care of most of the issues in South Lake County and will free up crossing guards to go to the John Play area, which is in Quinlan, who are already K4. Everybody's going to have different needs and we're going to have to, to work those and, you know, there are specific areas that we are all concerned about and there may have to be some specific recommendations made to take care of those. But enabling those two issues right now, I believe will take care of most of the issues and really that takes care of most of the issues of both Mr. Mathias' district and mine and, you know, the cities of better availability to deal with the situation. So I still would recommend that we start immediately busing all children who are forced to cross six lanes of, six lanes and more traffic and bus children who are forced to cross a five mile an hour road that does not have crosswalks.
Thank you very much, Doctor. I guess they need clarification, Todd, because that doesn't take care of all four levels.
Like I said, what I did was, I did the homework for, for my area. I can't, and that's why, that's what I'm saying, you know, Roseanne has specifications. The construction, I'm not expected to cross construction on 27 right now, we couldn't get over the cross. You know, and it does, it changes every day. I mean, you drive it, you're not sure where everything is, cars are stacked up. I get that and is that something that we need to address, which Roseanne brought up and say, look, if they're having to cross major, you know, we can make this policy. All I'm saying is that these two issues right here take care of most issues that I see in South Lake County. We need to build this with all board members, yes. Is it going to make it so that every student has the ability to ride a bus? No, that's why the courtesy comes in. So there are two separate things here, but I agree that we do need to take care of those hazardous conditions that we've known is today. And I would be more than truthful for that.
So what you're, I just want to be clear, so what you're basically saying is, the work that I'm doing with the MPO or all of any of us, we're doing with the MPO and city. We're working on getting this established, three hazardous ways. Once they are, we get the funding because they are hazardous ways. But we're going to supplement until those designations come back. That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then what do we do? Do we go with the regard county plan to, for the rest of the students to run the courtesy and the parents have to pay?
I think it's a big two-pronged approach where we go after those.
And we can make it and say it's hazardous for us, we don't have to run on the state. And it's more complicated now than it was to begin with, when Bill brought up the Senera audit and stuff he needed to do this. But I don't want to jump back into something else so that we look like a bunch of idiots again because we've made a decision and we have not researched it. We don't know if staff can get without going right now. Let me finish. I don't know that staff has the time. I mean, we threw them under the bus to begin with.
No, 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 they said they were ready, timeout. They said they were ready and we were not ready.
And they said they were ready because we're board members, we're going to tell you to base them on.
Madam, I would like to say that we get here, the administration was ready.
Yes.
And, you know, we are board members, but if we can't get honest, clear answers from staff, we also heard the superintendent agree that she would work as hard as she could to get this established. I don't want to see us, the symbol starts out, I want to see us move forward. I think that we have to understand those, that at this time, we were told that it could happen. We backed away from the middle school, high school combination because we were told, no, that it could not happen. So there is a difference in the statement, but the Senator has a right to her.
The one thing I'm not, the one thing I'm not wanting to do, I want this to go back to staff. All I'm saying is, this isn't a policy written today, this is, we have to give our staff direction. This is part of the problems we run into is that, and that's what we had before, was that we were just picking up students. It just happened over time. And we all have, just like they said, we all have special interests. I have special interests because I'm a candidate. Does it mean I don't care about the North? No, I will vote for the North there as well. But I have local knowledge out there, I knew where the issues were. And so I went down and I said, what simple, straightforward policy that staff can understand and we write today so that they understand. And that was my goal and what I am putting out there is two simple things. And I'm not wanting to let it water us, I want our staff to do it. So I'm not trying to set one, in theory, so for yours, Howard, I do say that we, and it's not going to happen tomorrow, I get that. We're not going to be expecting students to come along, we can't regret that, I get it. But we can start moving forward and say, this is what we want to do. How quick can we have these in place? And when I start talking about these two, I agree with Phil on the depot. I think adding in and using those who are coming in the six lane or to cross 55 mile, put them at the depot. That makes it a little bit easier on us and we can use a good depot. And fine, we have policy long-term.
I did speak with the superintendent about the depot or the idea that we have had in Claremont and she said that was not fundable. We can do it, but it is not fundable. So is that a safe way of moving forward? Yes, it is. But once again, we're talking about transporting students from a door to a school.
Something, Madam Chair. Our definition has been on stage.
But the yawn is not funding what I'm saying, yeah, okay. And I'm not fighting the thing for remember up here because I know it gets further, the vain time, you know, the Senator, can I finish my thing? Yes.
I don't disagree with what he said. My concern is, $85,000, if that's what Carol has, is not going to solve this problem.
No, it won't.
It's not going to solve everybody's, it's his day's problem because some of those will never be considered hazardous, the ones that are, they're walking. And I feel for them, I honestly do. But we're putting ourselves right back into the vain bind. I have no problem saying, yes, we'll bust anybody that's on a six lane or that has to go in 55 or a higher. I have no problem doing that, Todd. I'm not sure the $85,000 is going to cover that. You don't have all the information here to make another decision. And like I said, I don't have a problem with something else that we can't deliver on. It's just.
Want to say something? When I asked Mr. Mathias for the $85,000, certainly she had stated a larger figure first and then she called me back with the $85,000. I know that that was not funded for the entire time, but it is a beginning. It is the beginning of finding money. That money was small fruit hanging today and could be picked and used and used for a purpose that isn't going to be identified if number one or number two, but a resolution for busing. Mr. Mathias.
The, and to Roseanne's point, 64 counties out of 67 are rated the courtesy bus. But not back to Elmo's ways, I don't like to hear what the other kids are doing, let's talk about Lake County. Where we have hazardous areas, we have got to bust these kids. I'm sorry, this is, and I'm the most conservative guy up here. That also, but also, excuse me, but also, I will say this, that parents have called me and where they had saved walkways, they didn't mind going two miles. So we really have to deal with those issues where it's hazardous and the state definition of hazardous, maybe we have a different opinion about that. And we ought to hear what that opinion is and I say go for the funding and get the money and plan later because you damn sure can get a return phone call.
And, yeah, I just, and I applaud everybody that has this great feeling that we're moving forward. I think you have to also look at the funding that is available that we're not attaching. And that is the fact that we are putting in these students on regular buses instead of having them in buses that have always been identified with their companion siblings with them for assistance. This is something that we should be doing. We should be looking at any kind of voucher that we can get. It is time to move outside the box. The box has been identified over in regard county. What I'm saying is, and did originally, it is an alternative. What I'm also saying is, these individuals aren't going to go away till their children are safe. I wouldn't go away till mine is safe. Can we revert back to routes that are established, that routes that work? That's something we need to hear from our transportation director. And I feel bad because our superintendent's not here to speak for this, but I'm going to ask Mr. Cole, Mr. Howard, to get Mr. Bender back up. Mr. Bender.
Not by tomorrow, sir, or not. I wouldn't want, I think that'd be pushing the issue. Could we get back there in maybe a week's time, first of the week? That's a possibility, you know, but a lot of the positions, there was 27 positions that we cut and we didn't fill those and most of those came from attrition. So I'm going to have to look at the, well, I have enough drivers to put them all back on issue. So there's some things that we'll have to address to see. The bulk of them, I work in your win, I'll do what you ask me to do and I'll do my very best to make it happen.
I believe that, I will, sir. I think we've had a pre-ensured decision here, we don't want to do that again. I'm comfortable that we have established routes that we just got to do. In the interim, we're working on a policy. I'm not saying keep those established routes to your law. I'm saying we have established policy that we can look at, we can adopt, we can amend. We have specific highlighted areas and I'd like to say that Highway 19 in Umatilla, Bates Avenue, Orange Avenue and Eustis all need special attention, just as Mr. Howard has. And we have individuals that have come from those communities to speak for those communities. It's not just a board member, it is the community that is speaking. So do I want to work with the MPO? Yes, I do. The Senator says that years away, and I don't mean decades away, she says within five years, that we have an issue right now. And the issue is the state funding. It is making children safer with parents. We've always done that way in Lake County. So I move, yes, most certainly.
We're very, obviously with 27 left bus drivers, it's going to be very difficult for us to go back to on 130. It's possible for you to look at a concerned area and use those depot stops because you said that we are not at capacity with some kids. I don't know how many.
Absolutely.
But with a portion, would that solve the problem and would that move this along quicker if you were able to use existing routes with existing capacity?
That would, that would be where we would go first. Because I don't think we need to, I know we weren't efficient last year, so I know we had some room for improvement anyway. So this 27 was not all a result of, of just the two miles, there was some efficiencies that we had been working and continuing to work on. So I do think we can do what you would like to do without having to come back to where we work, say the end.
Can you say that?
Okay. My concern, though, and I want to hear from Mr. Mathias. Come Monday, and there's a tremendous torrential rainstorm, et cetera, et cetera. The children are walking when we could be moving on this action. We could be moving on the action with the regard county policy pending and working towards that. Now, Mr. Mathias.
I want to be clear, I'm not advocating going back today, it's all mine. I'm really advocating, looking at these hazardous areas, that those areas that support the state on two-miles parent responsibility, I don't think anyone has had an issue with that where it is safe. But can we not address those areas that we know in our heart of hearts are an issue and then expand with this?
I, I, maybe come back with a rough tip. I think so, but what I would really, really ask, because I think the issue that we ran into coming into this year is we didn't have a defined line. And the line was constantly moved and we'd make a little adjustment here, then over to this, we'd make a little adjustment here. I mean, who's going to determine, who's going to determine, I mean, 27 is six lanes and it runs north and south for most of the county and 50 runs all the way across. So I guess who's going to draw the firm line that says, these kids will get it and these won? Because that's what we're going to need to make it work.
And the only thing I'm saying, sir, is that we don't have a plan in place except what you've done in the past. I'm not saying for perpetuity, I'm saying for a period of time until we get a policy. And I want to make that clear, a period of time until the policy is secure because it takes 30 plus days to get a policy. Okay? And Mr. Fix.
The only thing additionally I was going to suggest is, maybe if we could meet individually with each board member, either in person on the phone, go over each one, and I wrote down a number of them, and see where we can provide transportation, those key spots that were just mentioned. That may be an alternative as well.
And, Mr. Fix, I agree that I want everything done on the public side. We made a mistake on the public side, we need to make a correction on the public side. So if board members need to come back with areas, then we need to bring those back to the next meeting, but we've got time. The mistake was made in pre-ensured, not in any kind of passionate statement where we wanted to hurt a child, but in a fix of the state of Florida puts you in when it doesn't supply enough funding for transportation. And certainly we can prove in Lake County, Mr. Mathias did it. First step out of the box, Mr. Mathias said, you're not getting enough for transportation. And we all responded to that, maybe reacted to that. So I think he's been very gracious in the state, he wants to work with the board, we all want to work together. But to make individual calls, we just don't need that. Well, that's for five minutes. You all, thank you for your students and I advise you sometime off.